Z. You can't hear on yours. Only through Shelly's. We can trade.
Try it again, Lee.
Can you hear me now?
Still an echo. We can't hear you, though.
Still hearing echo?
It's because you got two microphones activated in the same room too close to each other.
How about if you guys call as new?
How many other people?
You're muted. Are these mics on?
No, they're not.
Okay. We don't have any mics on here.
Your computers and your phones do. I would, I mean, my.
It says muted right now.
But you turn the volume off.
You're not even on, right? Can you hear me now?
That's better.
No echo.
Not.
That's good.
Yeah, but I can't hear Brett.
Because you're, well, a problem, well, is your, is your audio off on the.
Hearing it through there.
Can you hear me, Lee?
I'm getting it through his, not through here.
Can they hear you?
Can you hear me, Brett?
I can't. Can you hear me?
He can, but I can't hear them. They're real soft. It's not coming through on this. Coming through on John's. All right, how about now?
Test, test.
We're good.
Is that better?
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, I can hear you now. I'll have to get close. Everybody's here. Shelly, we take roll.
Mr. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Glass?
Absent.
Mr. Richardson?
Anderson.
Anderson.
What did I say, Richardson? I'm so sorry. Mr. Richard Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Frew?
Here.
Mr. Patrick?
Here. Did you hear both of them?
Yes.
Welcome, everybody, to August 13th zoning board meeting. Yep, we're a little late, but we can, we'll get through it. Tonight, we have public hearing. My screen went off. I got no picture. Tonight, we have two public hearings. We have application 2020-07Z by Joshua and Amy Now. Are, the Now is here?
Yep.
Yes, we're here.
All right. It says here that you're requesting an area variance for construction of a porch connected to the front of a house at 1226 Rush Scottsville Road, Rush, New York, 14543. The house is only set back 100 foot from the center line of the road. Is this correct?
Yes.
Okay. On this, is it just going to be a six by eight foot deck?
Yes.
With stops, it will have a porch roof over it?
No roof.
Okay, just a six by eight deck then?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a public comment on this?
Did the, did the deputy clerk read the public notice on this?
No, not yet.
Okay. I would read that before opening up to the public hearing, if you could.
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to the provisions of the zoning ordinance of the town of Rush and sections 267 of the town law, a public hearing will be held in the zone for the zoning board of appeals of the town of Rush at the William R. Eudicious Pavilion, 5977 East Henrietta Road, Rush, New York, on August 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM to hear all persons interested in the following, and also via Zoom.
Are the other two board members not on computers? Are they just present in the room, Lee?
Yes.
Yeah, they can't get, they're not, their, their computers aren't working.
Okay, but they're, they're physically present?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, is there any, opening the public hearing for 2020-07Z. Is there any comment from the audience? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing for 2020-707Z for Joshua and Amy Now. Would it be okay, we're going to assign that tonight, probably myself and maybe another individual come out and look at the property to see exactly what you've got there? Would that be okay with you?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I have a, I don't have it right in front of me. Could you give me your phone number? 269-0865?
Correct.
Okay. Probably, my name is Lee. Probably, I'll give you a call midweek or something, first part, and we'll come out and take a look at in the evening.
Okay.
And we'll go from there, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Would you, and would you happen to have, I didn't get one, but would you happen to have a drawing of exactly what you're going to do? I know you wanted to put a six by eight deck with just some steps on it. Would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Then, did you also read 2020-80Z for KND?
I didn't read that yet.
The public notice for the public hearing?
Okay.
With that said, I'm going to close 2020-07Z with Joshua and Amy Now. Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye. Thanks.
Okay. The next application is 2020-08Z by KND Properties. Do you have the public notice on that?
Application 2020-8Z.
Just a minute. Can you hear that?
Yes.
No, come on over here.
Application 2020-8Z by KND Properties, Western New York LLC, requesting an area variance for the construction of a 10 by 12 storage shed within 25 feet of the south property line of nearest neighbor.
Is there any representative here for KND?
I'm not hearing anybody.
What's that?
I didn't hear anyone.
No. With that being said, then I'll close public hearing 2020-08Z by KND Properties. And I'll close the hearing, and we will table this. I'll assign it to a couple of people, and we'll table this, and we'll take it up at the next meeting.
Lee, if the applicant's not present, do you think it would make sense to keep that open until the next meeting? Or, or contact the applicant? I don't know. Do they, are they aware that there's a meeting tonight?
I believe they were contacted by the building inspector. There is, I don't know if it actually pertains to this or not, but there's some other problems with the property.
Okay.
The building inspector was going to notify. I think that's why they're not here today.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
All right.
They were notified by mail.
Right. Yes. Shelly says they've been notified.
Okay, very good.
Okay, yeah, I get to that, yeah. Next up, there was a application that we tabled for 2020-04Z by Charles and Linda Pepper on behalf of Daniel and Lindsay, requesting an area variance for 50 Stony Brook Road, 14543. The proposed project is a 1,017 square foot, one-bedroom in-law suite. This is an addition, additional of 217 square feet above the town code. At the last public hearing, I read that the Rush Fire Department, they reviewed the application of 2020-08Z, and they didn't have any issues at the time. And myself, we went out and looked at the property. There seemed to be no issues. They're 50 foot from the property line. It's behind a lot of the residence. They have plenty of land there and stuff like that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for the granting of the variance. Would you like to read that, John?
Like the second app? Second app motion?
Right. Rich, second it.
Someone going to read the, is someone going to read, is someone reading the motion?
Yes, yes. I made the motion. Rich, second it, and John's going to read it.
Fair enough.
The Lindsay motion, whereas the zoning board of appeals of the town of Rush, the zoning board has examined the application 2020-04Z submitted by Charles and Linda Keeper, Keeper? On behalf of Daniel, Lindsay, Keeper, Lindsay, the application of 50 Stony Brook Road, Rush, New York, 14543, the property located in R30 district requesting, requesting requirement, together with the maps, diagrams, and other materials, was submitted with this application. And whereas the property is located in the R30 district, as set forth in the zoning law in town of Rush, the zoning law. And whereas, a public hearing on this application was held July 23rd, 2020, and notice was posted as required by law. And whereas all persons at the hearing designed to speak on the matter were heard, all correspondence were read, those statements were considered by the zoning board. Now, therefore, be it resolved, if the zoning board of appeals determines that this is a type-two action exempt from CEQA review pursuant to section 617.517 of the Title VI of New York State Code of Rules and Regulation, which includes grants of area variances for a single-family or two-family residence. And be it further resolved pursuant to the criteria set forth under section 267B of the zoning law, the zoning board determines that the application is approved for the variance to be permitted, permit the construction of the necessary in-law apartment. With 1,017 square feet, 1,017 square feet, a 27% deviation from the required maximum 800 square feet, 800 square feet, based on the following, the granting of the area variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood based on the plans provided by the applicant. The proposed in-law apartment is in the rear of the house. The benefits sought by the applicant will not be achieved by some, some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than this area of variance. The benefit of variance will provide the privacy that the applicants are looking to achieve. The requesting area variance is not substantial. Section 120614, zoning law requirement that the maximum square feet of 800 square feet, the applicant is looking to increase that by 217 feet, 27% deviation. The requested square feet increase, fee increases variance will not have a diverse effect on the impact or on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or this, this district, being in addition to the principal dwelling, which will be constructed in accordance with all applicable building and fire prevention code requirements. While the request for the area variance is self-created, this fact does not conclude the granting of the area of variance. In consideration of the other four factors, the benefits to the applicant, the granting of the variance outweighs the possible detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And be it further resolved, taking into consideration the five factors that the zoning board finds, that the benefits to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood and/or community. And the variance requested in the application are minimal variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, welfare of the community and its future. Resolved, that application 2020-04Z is granted and submitted, subject to the following condition, the square footage in the applicant shall be more than 1,017 feet, 17 square feet, excuse me, the applicant must meet any application applicable to town code's special permits and inspection requirements, including, without limitation, obtaining approval of the town planning board as required under section 12061 of the code, the Rush code.
There you go. Okay. The last thing is, we have application 2020-03Z by Ann Stewart, requesting a front setback variance for the proposed barn location does not comply with the 120-18 Town of Rush Code. Property is located at 8015 West Henrietta Road in his own R30. We've been going back and forth with this for some time now. Is, John, I want to, attorney, I want to thank you for sending me those pictures. Did you hear me?
Yeah, fine, yep.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there seemed to be, maybe it was misinterpreted, I don't know, but Elizabeth seemed to be confused on some, on a couple of things in the last meeting. One of them was, it wasn't our concern about her water running on the state property. It was the state water running on to her property. And the same thing with the utility easements. It wasn't from the main lines to her house. It was the main lines that run up through there. And with that being said, okay, whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or a deterrent to nearby properties will be created by the granting of an area variance. From what I've kind of gotten from everybody is the fact that being so close to the road, being a garage out front and stuff like that, there are no other garages, I guess you could say, out in front of the buildings. So it could create, and we have had some neighbors that have complained about it that I've heard from. I wish they would have put it in writing. And I also received a letter with support from neighbors on it not objecting to it. There is 2, 4, 6, 8, 9, 10. So there's 10 of them that have signed a petition or a letter stating that they haven't had a problem with it. But this being said, that it will change the character of the neighborhood, this garage out front, so close to the road. So that's that. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. It's kind of a unique situation where there was a permit issued. There was misunderstanding or whatever on the setback. But be that being said, that she owns a little over 3.72 acres, so the building, if need be, could be moved, or there is more room to put a building, I guess you could say, rather than up close by the road. So it actually could have been, or could be moved. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I think you have a property down the road. You've already enforced this.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we've had several in town.
Right.
And being that is that it comes back to a safety issue, too. It said, they measured it, it's 43 feet from the center line. If the state road is 66, center line to the easement or right of way would be 33 feet. So that leaves 10 feet between the easement and this building, okay? According to their own topo maps and whatnot, that basically it is somewheres in the neighborhood of approximately the road seven foot higher than the base of this garage. I mean, I haven't shot grades. I'm going by their topo map. That being said, you're only 10 foot off the easement. There is a utility easement that does run fairly close, but they're not setting on it or whatever. I'm sure there'd be room. But you have to remember that according to the topo, there's seven to eight feet from the center line of the road to the base, and they're only 10 foot off the easement with this. It's already been established that it could be a safety issue because they've already put guardrails up, okay? Is that big enough deterrent to stop anything? Who knows? It's the fact that they did put them up, so there would be a safety issue. And that's before this building was built. The other thing that I noticed is on these topo maps that they have, is that all of the drainage runs to that garage. Okay, that being said, now they've changed and altered the drainage from all the way up the hill. So it's not her water going to the state that's the issue. It's the state and other properties running to her that's, that's an issue. And where the building sits, there's already a pond. I'm sure that maybe they were going to grade it or going to try and grade it, but it already looked to me, the pictures didn't show that John sent me, but the back of the garage, the finished floor looks to me like two feet, maybe more, below the existing grade. So, but by changing and altering the drainage with the, by the building being there, garage or whatever, now it's not that they're increasing water, because I see no use for water here, but now they're changing the amount of it and the rate in which it'll flow down to the neighbors on West Rush Road. So it could be a safety error. And whether the request of the area variance is substantial, it's probably one of the most substantial area variances that I've come across in a couple of years. They're asking for almost 60 some percent. They're asking for over 60% of relief. I think it's like 60, I think it's 67% of relief for this variance. Which, in my opinion, is substantial, when I've had other people comment that it's very substantial. Being eight foot lower than the road, I unfortunately have to get up in the middle of the night, plow state roads. And the other concern, it would be the safety, because when they plow the road, the snow and ice does not stay on the state road. And being eight foot below it, being only 10 foot off of the easement, I can see this building getting pelted with ice pellets and snow. That's just what I've come up with. You know, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, impact on the physical and environment commissions in the neighborhood and in the district, like I said, I didn't see a plan for regrading, but by them changing and altering the drainage where this building is setting or wants to be set or whatever, now they've changed and altered it. They're not producing any more water, but they've changed the direction, the increase in flow to the downhill of West Rush Road residents in the back of the houses. So there was a physical and environmental condition to the neighborhood and district. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considered shall be relevant to the decision of the board of appeals, but shall be necessarily, okay, precluded in the granting of an area advantage. This really wasn't produced by Ann Stewart or Elizabeth. This was, she received a building permit. They started to build it. When somebody noticed what was going on and things were wrong, the building inspector was sent there. He asked them to stop work. They did. They secured it, did, okay. But there was never an official, what I found in the records, I can't find anything in the records that says that she was notified officially of a stop work order. No registered, no certified mail, no letter, no, nothing tacked on the building and whatnot. And an official, from my understanding, there wasn't an official stop work order issued until June 23rd. Okay, which would be almost eight months, nine months later after the fact they were asked to stop. So as far as her creating this, being a self-created, Lee, it really wasn't. It was a lot of mistakes being made. I mean, if you look at the drawing they provided, somebody that really doesn't understand it, okay, in the front of where they have it marked, it says 117 feet setback. But the problem is, is they put the overlay on a tape map, okay? Do you have that, Rich? Did you see that?
Yeah.
This is where they made the drawing, okay? And here's the center line that she works at, 117 foot setback. So, yeah, so when the building inspector saw this, okay, not, you know, being really familiar with stuff or whatever, and he was new to the job, which is no excuse, he just read 117 feet and issued the permit. And I don't know why, when he issued a. And I don't know why, when he issued a verbal stop work order, I don't know why there wasn't an official stop circuit.
Yeah. So. It was however, they entered into the building inspector's system. That, it is recorded in here that there's a stop work order, but as you previously stated, nothing was transmitted from the individual.
Right, so they didn't know or whatever, and it went on for eight months. And because they had no official stop work order, the builder.
From the IPS system.
Okay, yeah, from the IPS and the building. Rough framing results, okay. Futter results failed, non-compliant. Says the footer results here, failure was non-compliant, stop work order issued, not in compliance with setbacks. That was on 1210, but he only entered that in the IPS computer. So Ann Stewart or Elizabeth was never officially notified of that. Brad, would you like to add something?
I'm good, Lee.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Brew?
No, you've done a very good job explaining it. Just what you just read.
Any comments from the audience?
Can I say a few things?
Sure.
As you pointed out, the building permit was granted initially back in November of 2019. And the map did show exactly where this building was going to be constructed. The DOT is indicated in an email that probably would the location of the building where it is. It's going to cost in excess of $23,000. We have an estimate in excess of $23,000 to move the building. As far as the drainage and so forth, I think if the board wants to grant a variance with conditions that would address those issues, I think that would be a fair way to handle it. I think the equities here are clearly with Mrs. Stewart, that she thought she was doing the right thing by getting the permit, constructing the building, that she relied upon the issuance of the permit, whether or not the code enforcement officer or zoning officer was new or not is really not relevant. I mean, if that's the position they fill, then they fill, then they should know where they're going. And it's going to be very expensive to move that. Building costs almost as much to move it as it did to construct it. They did not receive the, the stop work order until June of this year. At that time, the building was substantially completed. So we feel that Mrs. Stewart has invested right here, in fact, that she relied on the building permit and that she would, you know, need the variance to use the building for its intended purpose. As far as any drainage issues or snow and ice and so forth, that really, that's something that my clients are going to have to deal with. And like I said, if the zoning board wants to put up conditions on the variance, that if the building's ever destroyed, it will not be rebuilt on the same footprint. That, you know, as far as drainage, if that's something that has to be changed, I think those issues can be addressed if the variance is granted, but with certain conditions to address whatever the concerns are. I also don't think that any neighbors that I'm aware of complained about this until quite recently. Like the building was, was basically up before, and I'm only aware of that. One individual appeared at the last zoning board meeting and had complaints. But I don't think anybody complained prior to that time as far as the public's concerned. And there are a number of people, and you've got the petition there, 10 people who said, we have no problem with the location of that garage. It's actually a pole barn where it is. So I'd ask that the board grant a variance, but with conditions, whatever the board feels is appropriate as far as conditions that address whatever concerns might exist.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Chairman Hetrick, I have one question. In the system, is there any other, or the documents, can you clarify in terms of any information on just notifying the property owner in terms of the issues associated with the setback? I rec, we, I recognize the stop work order issued written in June, but can you elaborate on just the timeline? As to when she was aware? If that is in the, in the records of the building inspector?
Yeah, the only thing I have was, was notified in, it'd be December 10th. Oh, that can't be right. That'd be December 10th of 2019, not 2020. Is what he's written here, okay. So there must be, but basically, he put it in IPS system, all right? But as far as Ann Stewart or Elizabeth being notified officially with any paperwork other than a verbal, there's no record of that. Any other questions? John? Any other questions?
Oh, no, not for me, thank you. I thought you were talking to the other John. There's a couple of them.
Do you have any other questions, John?
No, I think, you know, our request is that the board grant the variance.
Okay. With this being said, with the Ann Stewart one, that I'm going to table it until a little later this month, and we'll make a decision on that time.
So in that regard, Chair, Chairman Hetrick, you should talk to the board about availability if you do want to schedule a special meeting to do that. Since I think the next regular meeting would be the second Tuesday of September, which I believe is the 10th. So is your intention to try to do that at the end of the month in August?
Yeah, can we? What's the last Thursday of the month?
Let's see, 27th.
27th. Would you be available?
Yep.
Brad?
Uh, Lee, I should be, hold on one second. Just checking my calendar. Yes, I'm available.
All right, so we'll have a special meeting on August 27th at 7 o'clock.
So you want to, I would say you should probably pass a resolution to schedule a special meeting for August 27th at 7:00 PM to be noticed by the deputy clerk in accordance with applicable law. So just need a second for that, if someone wants to move that motion.
I'll second it, okay.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Brew?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Chair Hetrick?
Hi. All right, now the next was approval of the minutes of July 23rd, 2020. God bless you.
I so moved that we approved the minutes of July 23rd as prepared. I'll second that. Second.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Brew?
Hi.
Mr. Hetrick?
Hi. And with that, I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that. Hold the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Brew?
Hi.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Mr. Hetrick?
Hi. I want to thank you everybody for coming.
Oh, can I make a comment at this time, or we tried to chime in, but we were a little slow on the, on the button here.
Oh.
This is Charlie Kuiper.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for, for the approval. Appreciate that. It's taken, it's, it's been frustrating, but thank you very much. But this is probably not your place, but I, I need to get it out there that I'm wondering about the planning board meeting coming up on the 18th. Is that something that I'm on or not?
Just one, one minute, let me check.
Sure, sure.
He's on the September planning board because the application came in too late to get on the August board. But you will be on the September planning board meeting, which is the 15th.
What's the date of that?
September 15th.
September 15th.
Okay. All right, that, that's pretty much all, but again, thank you very much.
I couldn't notify you until after tonight's meeting.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, have a good night.
All right, you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right, good night. Night, Becky.
Good night, Lee. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Victoria?
Yes.
Can you email me the file for tonight's meeting?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Thank you.
It usually takes like an hour or so, but I will.
Yep, no rush, thanks.